So have you been down in the basement?
Me?
Which, which basement?
Firehouse.
No.
No?
No, they don't let me down there.
Why, afraid you're gonna fall down the steps?
Probably should. Say my dog's address.
Is it, is it, is it any different than a police station?
Hello?
The police station has-
It's a little better.
What?
Your side is kinda yucky too.
Oh, it's horrible, horrible.
I think I can talk to you guys, can I?
Oh, yes, we can.
Somebody talk into your mics.
Hello, test.
Test, one, two, three.
Hello?
It's very di- very low, I can barely hear you.
Test, one, two, three. Test, test, test.
Hold up.
Hello, any better?
Yeah, that's still really low, but if that's as loud as you got, I can make do with that.
Eric, is there, is there a volume, like, control over, somewhere over there?
There is, it's, I'm looking at it right now, so it's-
Yeah, but is it for the mics?
I, I don't know, I don't know if there's an-
It's on this, like, the-
It's the biggest complaint we have.
Sound, yeah.
I keep you up to ninety so I can hear you.
Yeah.
I thought we fixed this, thought we paid money to fix this.
Fix, fix, what, the audio?
Oh, no, this is not you, Paul. We're good.
Deputy Chief, how you doing?
I'm good, I'm good, can't complain.
Are you, are you, are you sitting in for chief or is chief coming?
No, he's on the way, he was right behind me.
I gotta, I gotta agree on it too.
I know you guys can, but sometimes just make a copy you can laminate or something.
I did. Right, it was a day.
Depends on how much you are.
What? I don't say much. I just say a couple things and that's it. Just for that, I'll just say, Dora says I talk too much, I'm not saying anything tonight.
She coming?
I was just gonna, does she normally use her tablet? Cause I had it charged just in case, but I wasn't-
Nope. At least probably should never use the computer.
Okay. Just in case.
Still makes them drop it off at our house.
Hello.
Evening.
Amber won't be here tonight.
Oh, she won't.
I was gonna say, I feel like I was walking, yeah, seeing you set that up, look, up, look.
Okay.
Yeah, she just goes back, she's on her way here.
Okay.
Hi, Dora, hi, Rick. Huh? Did you look, said? I'm tired. Lovely. Were you out at the campsite?
Hey, Jake.
No, that's called.
Jake.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry, now I feel like I'm rubbing salt in the wound.
I've got a couple of quick, I've got a couple of quick questions for you.
Sure.
Um, hey, so I'm looking over your budget, or your expenditures.
Oh, really?
And, like, maybe I'm on a couch, but like, uniform patches, chevrons, hemming of, five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
These, they, it, it costs a ton of money.
Like, how many, like, how many does that?
I don't know why it doesn't actually, uh, even-
You can save it.
No, even on my home computer, it doesn't do that for board docs.
Is that the whole, like, part of it? Then, okay, I get it, it's like one person.
No, 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 that's not- Oh, I'm dropping the ball here.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, which, because you, usually because you have to buy, you know, patch for each arm, winds up being, winds up, it, it adds up really quick, and they have to customize it, they have patches.
Oh, okay, so it's like uniform pants, patches, G Brewster.
Yep.
G Brewster must be in.
Yeah.
So that person had five hundred and three dollars in that.
Yep.
So that's, like, how, like, for that, just that officer, like, how many, is that, like, five pair or something like that, or?
Usually because, um, the, the uniform pants run about, um, seventy dollars, and then uniform shirts, right?
Yeah.
About the same.
Hey, what?
Uniform shirts, about the same amount, and that's for, that's for one, that's for one set, and then you have, usually, you have somewhere in winter, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the Axiom, there were like a bunch, I don't, I guess I'm learning a lot, but like, the Axiom was like a bunch of charges and credits. That's all the same amount, so it's like, it was like, we were charged to, for-
So what happened?
Charged, and then we were given a credit, then we were charged twice by mistake, then we were charged twice by mistake, and then about invoice, we were credited.
Yeah, yeah, sure, that's what I'm like-
Can you just, I'm not gonna-
I know that, yeah, that's, but the sound doesn't work on this end, um, for this one, but I'm, like, if that messes up, cable stream and stuff, that's totally good with that, so I have no point.
At, at some point, at some point, we'll see-
He never hit it?
A credit for that charge.
He's been, and with all his chemo, he's had to have, like, alternative-
If it's-
Vaccines and stuff, because it wipes out all your vaccine.
Unless we want, I think those are all-
He's feeling good, and I, so I'm like, sending some allergy medication and stuff, and he-
So I take it down to score on a, on a golf course, and I-
Red dots makes sense.
Cents and miles and days.
You know, I don't know.
No, I'm good.
He didn't mention it.
I'm, I'm good with everything, I just-
I don't know if that's still a label, but it's different now, the mutation, I'll have to ask him.
It seems to have come into the population, but my son had it.
Kids have fun.
Cause I'm the only one my family-
You've not had it yet? Oh.
Grandparents probably love doing it.
Breathe it, I don't breathe it, no, it's, I don't-
I may have had it, but if I-
Yeah, you might not have known, yeah.
Cause, I mean, it's only, when I haven't made significant, well, outside of this. If it's just a cost level, I don't wanna-
All right, so I'm, so I'm good, no, that answered my question.
Gotta be a little more patient.
I think it made me the same, yeah.
Oh, we're the best. The fat sweaty guys are awesome.
Well, did he fix it yet?
No.
Okay, well, my offer was only good for, like, maybe a few minutes, but not, not two weeks.
You're on, you're on.
I don't care.
Oh, are you still coming?
All right, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, we'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock PM, uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Okay, Bond Crooks, Benedetti.
Here.
Cabo Watten.
Present.
Pate.
Here.
Peruggi.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rezepa.
Make the motion, excuse counsel person, Bond Crooks.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Uh, next, we have the minute approval of the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
I move to accept the minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Uh, next up, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment is reserved for, uh, items on today's agenda, and we'll have another opportunity for all other public comment, um, at the close of the meeting. Ask that anyone wishing to speak on Zoom uses the raise hand function, anyone in person begins with their name and address, uh, directs all questions through me, and limits their comments to five minutes. Right, we'll move right on along. Uh, next up, we have, under appointments, uh, from the Civic Commission here, I'm asking for this body's approval of my appointment of Judy Urbansky and Jim Urbansky to the Civic Commission for terms expiring July first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Okay. Benedetti.
Yes.
Cabo Watten.
Yes.
Pate.
Yes.
Peruggi.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rezepa.
Abstain.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have, under authorities, commissions, boards, and committees here, um, from Carrie Hancock, uh, her letter of resignation from the Downtown Development Authority. Um, we ask that, uh, this body can receive and place it on file, along with, uh, sending her a letter of appreciation for her service.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, next up, we have thirty-third District Court fines, costs, and fees from May of twenty twenty-three, and I will defer to our alternate delegate, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to receive and place on file the fines, costs, fees for May twenty twenty-three submitted by the thirty-third District Court, showing the city of Trent owing eight thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-two cents.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered, thank you very much. All right, uh, we'll go to our department heads and officials, um, we've got, uh, three items, uh, from our city administrator, first, uh, city recognition of holidays. Okay, go over to you, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, current, the city currently recognizes most federal and state holidays, but does not currently close for Martin Luther King Day or Juneteenth, in keeping with, and out of respect for these important celebrations. I'm recommending, um, adding both these days to the silly, city calendar and closing for business on these days. So I would ask that you move to add Martin Luther King Day and Juneteenth recognized to the city calendar and close City Hall for regular business. These days will be treated as compensative holidays for all non-union and management employees.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Councilwoman Pate?
Yeah, I just wanted to make note that, um, council has, um, been, uh, celebrating or recognizing those days already as well, so I'm very happy to see this is gonna continue throughout, uh, more of our offices, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Councilwoman. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Uh, next, we have approval of a city council orientation document.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, as part of the RRC certification process, the city of Trenton needs to have various published and adopted orientation packages that are given to council boards, authorities, and commissions. Um, the other ones are going through those particular commissions and groups that need to, uh, adopt them. Um, I think it's a pretty useful document, Ms. Pate has a couple of additions to it, which I'll, I'll leave to her, and I, I fully support. Uh, so I would ask that you approve the attached City of Trenton City Council Orientation Document for posting on our website and for its use going forward.
So moved.
Support.
So, and Councilwoman Pate, did you wanna go through the couple of edits, if you don't mind, not to-
Yeah, it's really just some, um, verbiage, it doesn't really change the meaning, which I just wanna start out by saying, I really like the first introduction to, um, who you are as a councilperson, and what our community profile is, and what we are, uh, working on, and what our future is as a city, so I would encourage everybody, even on council currently, to take a good look at it, and anyone running would, um, definitely, if you don't, if you don't believe this, and, and this is not what you're about, um, you know, maybe you wanna second, think about whether or not you wanna run, I feel that strongly about it. But, uh, just some minor things, such as, under community profile in the beginning, um, they don't, there's two places where Down River is not capitalized, um, they may not realize our people from, you know, Ann Arbor area may not realize that Down River is a more organized region, so if we could ask them to capitalize Down River twice in that paragraph. Um, they also tend to say a lot of, uh, there's some, a lot of numbers in here, and they refer to our coastline, uh, so if we can refer that to the seven miles of coastline that we have, I think it makes a impact of just how important our, our waterfront property is. Um, and then also in that section, um, it's talking about with community resiliency, downtown revitalization, and economic development initiatives. I would also, because I'm a proponent of this, like, to include the twenty twenty-one designation as a pure Michigan trail town, as one of the initiatives and celebrations that we have, uh, that we're, you know, working on pretty, pretty much there. So that would be in the community profile, so that would be capitalizing Down River, quantifying the miles of coastline, and then adding pure Michigan trail town to the initiatives. Uh, later on, you'd have to go, I mean, it doesn't really matter where it goes, I put it on page four after the zoning and city charter, it's kind of in the section where they're, uh, talking about essential planning and zoning documents. Um, there's other documents that are essential, and I think one of them is the budget, especially since it refers to it in this whole thing about, you, you need to know about your budget, and that's something that we are schooled on when we come on board. Um, and also a link to our city webpage, which has access to, you know, obviously, most of the information and people and systems that we have, make it easily accessible for our departments and, uh, commissions, to understand what the commissions are, and what do they do. And then, um, if we could also add some links, it doesn't really say much about our partnership, so the work that we do with MML, and SEMCOG, and Guidance Center, and Community Conference, and that sort of thing, just to bring awareness to, but that we do belong to other organizations, and we have delegates, and, you know, we do work outside of council on that, I think that would be an important addition. And then I think that was it. I was trying to think about when I sat here for the first time and had our meeting, and, you know, what, what did you tell me, and was it verbalized well enough in the document? So, it's minor things, if no one has any objections, I'd like to amend, um, the document, and I sent the copy to Dean, so he has a copy of it.
Yeah, no, I think that certainly that would be great, so if, uh, we're okay with the ad doing that as a, I can, don't know if we had the motion and support, but motion to approve the document with Councilwoman Pate's, uh, additional edits for that, if that was okay?
Yeah, yeah, as, as the motion maker, I'd, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, cool, thank you. Um, and then who was the supporter on that, Eric? Or was it Dora, was that okay with you too?
Yep.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
All right, uh, any further discussion from council on that? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, thank you very much, Councilwoman Pate, that was all good stuff.
I have too much time to read on my hands.
No, no such thing. All right, uh, we'll go next to our city attorney, um, for, uh, this agenda item, rather than our administrator, I apologize. Um, we've got ordinance number eight thirteen, eight fourteen, and, uh, eight fifteen, um, city clerk salary, city treasurer salary, and city accessory salary, I apologize, city, uh, city treasurer duties and salary.
Thank you, this is the second reading of the request to approve the, um, inclusion of any modification, of the modifications effective upon the election certification for the people to be elected to these three positions, uh, next year.
So moved.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered, thank you, sir. All right, we'll go to, uh, or actually, do, uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, do we have any, uh, late communications today?
Uh, no, we do not.
All right, I'll go over to our mayor pro tem, Councilwoman Pate then, for our dispersments and statements, and then our reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve the authorized dispersments of July fifth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of five hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you, I'd also like to move to approve the fire and police pension board draft minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, the recreation commission minutes of February seventh, twenty-three, March twenty-second of twenty-three, April nineteenth of twenty-three, and May sixteenth of twenty-three.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, we'll go to other council business now, um, I'll be very, very brief, um, on my end, and I just wanna say, uh, just to give a big, big, big thank you, um, to all of our city employees and volunteers, um, committee members, uh, and everyone, really, who had a part, and there's, I mean, literally hundreds and hundreds of people we could go through and thank, um, over the course of, uh, both our, our summer festival, um, and our fireworks, that it was, I got a lot of, lot of great feedback, um, from people, uh, while being there, um, even got a couple, uh, letters, uh, to my office, too, about how great the fireworks were, how much fun people had, um, and things like that, and it's, uh, it really, really, uh, takes just an unbelievable amount of work across so many different departments in the city, um, and with so many different people who do this just for their love of the community. Um, and it's, uh, I just, it's one of those things that makes me really, really proud for what we're able to do as a community, um, and for the people that, uh, work here and volunteer, uh, to do these things, to make sure that, uh, this is the Trenton that we know it can all live up to be. Um, so thank you to everyone that had a hand in summer festival, um, and fireworks between you, our police, fire, DPW, certainly our recreation department, festival committee members, all the vendors, local businesses, um, and people who just came out, um, spent their time and money, um, and, uh, just helped promote such a great atmosphere, and certainly, you know, always comes with, uh, challenges, and, uh, you know, and kinks in the road, and things like that, too, but, um, it, uh, was really, really a great weekend, and got lots of great feedback from, uh, a lot of people who were able to participate, so just thank you to everyone, um, who had part in that. Um, that's all I have for everyone today, um, and so we'll go to the rest of council now for comment, um, and the first one we have, uh, today is, uh, Councilman Peruggi.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna ditto your statements as far as the festival and all the people that worked on it and volunteered to do it, it was a success, and I got, I didn't receive any negative feedback, um, so I just appreciate everybody attending and participating, and the city, uh, employees that worked very hard, um, it was nice to see it all work together, so I'm all set.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Cabo Watten?
Happy belated Fourth of July to everybody, hope it was nice and safe, um, Mayor, I'd like to just kinda ditto the same comments, um, everybody did a great job at the, uh, the street fair and the fireworks, fireworks were fabulous this year, it was really, we had a nice spot to watch them, but, um, also, they just did a great job. I'll tell ya, I went down to the Detroit fireworks on Monday, and Trentons were, were pretty close to what Detroit's were, I mean, there's a fabulous job. So, um, thank you to everybody on the committees, the festival, um, you know, the boards and all that good stuff, um, you know, public services, public safety, that were there, spending all the overtime and, you know, working away, um, but you made it a great event, so thank you, and that's all I have tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
I would just like to say that it was such a wonderful and beautiful Trenton Fest, Congresswoman Dingell and I walked through, and it was amazing, it seemed a lot bigger, like, we had more vendors this year, and it seemed longer, so we really enjoyed that, and I wanna say thank you to all the volunteers, DPW, police, fire, the vendors, it was just amazing, I got a few texts from some friends from here on township in New Boston, and they were praising our fireworks, and they really enjoyed their time coming out here, and that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti?
The same, I thought it was a great event, um, walked around down there, it was, even though it was raining on Friday, it was still nice, it didn't rain all day, and the fireworks turned out great, it was nice to see, able to walk around down there, it wasn't real crowded, so hopefully next year we'll get more people out for the fireworks, but yeah, it was a great event, I think everybody did a great job, and Tim and the rest of groups, Mike and his group, and Keith and their group, and everybody did a wonderful job with it.
Thank you very much, Councilman. And Councilwoman Pate?
Yeah, I would also like to echo everyone's comments- Yeah, I would also like to echo everyone's comments. I think the fair was a lot of fun. There was a lot to do. Everybody seemed to be having a good time. The fireworks themselves were fantastic. I just, I guess, have a few more questions about the whole thing because, again, like, if we could get some kind of report, or if at least you could, Mr. Mayor, or Dean could get a report about, like, you know, did we save money by doing the fireworks during the fair? And then my other big question is, because I do live downtown, it was markedly different, the amount of people that were in my neighborhood. I mean, it was uncannily quiet. And usually, we have cars parked everywhere. We have people flocking everywhere. We have cars in the actual street waiting to park, you know, before the fireworks. So, you know, it's hard to say if those were all Trenton residents, but in my opinion, I just want to make sure, because the town closed down and it was so quiet, that enough Trenton residents were actually able to see the fireworks, or if they were dissuaded about, you know, the fair being there and I didn't come down because it was going to be crazy, or, you know, I, I haven't had any feedback whatsoever about it, other than the actual fireworks were good. So I, again, I just want to make sure we're serving enough people, just by my observation of not a lot of people were in my neighborhood. And, you know, I heard the park was a little quiet, and, you know, were they all in Elizabeth Park? I don't know. I didn't see it because I didn't go down there, or, you know. So I just want to make sure if we're going to spend Trenton money on the Trenton fireworks, that Trenton residents have the first knack at getting into the downtown. And if it's something where we need to open up the traffic a little bit, or if you, I know we had to show our ID to get in because we live there, but maybe Trenton residents could show the ID that they're from Trenton and can get downtown. I don't know what we do, but I just want to make sure everybody's getting a chance to see them and enjoy them. And then the next thing I wanted to mention is that on July 13th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, the city of Riverview is hosting a SEMCOG, which is Southeast Michigan Council of Government outreach. They're going to all the different regions, and they're coming to Downriver at Riverview City Hall. Again, July 13th from 1:00 to 3:00, it is to discuss and have input on the regional transportation plan. I'm hoping to be there. I think I can't, though, because I think that's our U of M orientation that day, so I might not be there. But, you know, if anyone can go, you know, we're a pure Michigan Trail Town, so we might want to have some input on mobility and, you know, just access to transportation and what kind of, you know, is it pedestrian? Is it bikes? Is it disability? Is it, you know, whatever. So movement in our area and who gets, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So if we could go and make a big fuss about what we want in our Downriver region, that, and that's open for everybody, not just council members. And then I'd also like to report that we had a June slow roll for, to kick off summer, and it was really fun, and we met at Mr. Nix, and I want to thank Mr. Nix for doing such a fantastic job of welcoming 27 people who were on the ride into their restaurant. I worked with them, and, you know, they offered support and, and were very gracious, and it was nice to have them as a partner. And we had a lot of fun. So please join us again on July 22nd. We are looking for a little bit later of a ride. We're doing a glow roll that day, and I'll be announcing more details. Just follow the Trail Town Facebook page. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. All good stuff there. All right, we'll go to our other elected officials now. Mr. Deputy Clerk, do you have anything for us?
Okay, so our next regular council meeting is Monday, July 17th at 7:00 PM.
Great, thank you very much. Madam Assessor, do you have anything? Let's see here. Yep, yeps. Sound's still not working. Fortunately, my new laptop right here next to me, it has been repaired. Did not want to mess with the cords before the meeting and then inevitably not have video or something. So thumbs up. Hopefully, it means all is good, but cool. All right, thank you very much, Madam Assessor. Mr. Treasurer?
Yeah, I had an idea that, I had an idea that the audio is not going to work, so I came here purposely, because to me, this is the most important part of the meeting, because I do have an announcement.
I got my bill in the mail on Saturday, too.
Okay, anyways, it's great to be with you all, and, and this, that is part of the notification, is that the bills, the tax bills have gone out for property tax. They are due prior to or on August 31st. So if you've not gotten your bill, I would wait till Monday, but if you haven't gotten it over the weekend, please give us a call at the city treasurer's office, because everybody's supposed to get a copy of their tax bill. I know I did, and, and we appreciate everybody's cooperation in getting their taxes paid on time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is important. Oh, Councilman Peruggi?
Yes, Mike, can you, I saw my bill, and I was just curious, where does that $31 for administrative fees go to?
Boy, you're tempting me. It does come, it does go for administration, so it goes for the cost of producing and sending out the taxes. And I am looking over to Deputy Treasurer Jill, and she'll confirm, I think she'll confirm that. So it's, it's the cost involved in collection.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I just thought it was a little steep.
Well, it's been on there for several, I think, several years.
Pretty standard for a lot of communities. It is allowed for the state.
Now, is it, is it standard fee, or is it based on your property value?
It's 1% across the board.
Okay. For, for those at home, it's 1%.
Okay.
And so it's, it's a reasonable fee in that, because we're the ones charging it, but it's a reasonable fee, but it's pretty standard. And again, I think we've been doing it, and I'll find out exactly and give you a text or an email as to how long we've been doing it. So it's not new. It's not a surprise, but obviously, everybody expects or would love for the taxes, their tax bill to go down. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen.
All right, all right.
So.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Treasurer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that was our, do any of our other department heads wishing to speak? No one hustling over there? All right, we'll go now to public comment. We'll go to any comment in person first, then those on the Zoom. Anyone on the Zoom wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function. I would ask that anyone wishing to comment, please begin with their name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit your comment to five minutes. So, Mr. Mills?
Lawrence Mills, 1940 Riverside Drive. Just wondering what the status of activity or inactivity at the hospital is.
Yes, absolutely. Do you want to take this?
Sure, I'll give you an update.
Hour and a half ago.
Yeah, as of an hour and a half ago. I spoke to the contractor. So there's interior work that is going on that is non-demolition, doesn't qualify as demolition work. So some of that's going on. July 17th, Eagle's going to be down here, and they're going to dig and remove the second underground storage tank. That underground storage tank will create a hole about 20 by 40, but they're going to try to get it filled as soon as they get test results back, as opposed to the last time where they let it sit for four or five months. That, the other thing that's different with this tank is this tank was filled and taken out of service. The other tank was taken out of service, but was never emptied. So that hopefully should go smoother. The court receiver has signed and executed the contracts for the general contractor and the demolition company, and council has approved the demolition contractor. So right now, the timeframe we anticipate is, in the near term, they're going to be doing some remedial site cleanup. They're going to be taking care of the underground storage tank, and they're going to do it a little different than the demo of the other building, where they're going to scavenge or salvage before they take the building down. They figure that's going to take them about three weeks from issuance of the demolition permit. I talked to the contractor. He plans on having the demolition permit requested by Friday. Normally, that takes about 10 days, but we think we can turn it around in two or three business days and get it going, as long as there's no surprises. So then, the, the exterior demolition would commence probably three-ish weeks after the issuance of the demolition permit.
Is the owner of the building in agreement with everything that's going on?
He doesn't really have a choice, to be honest with you.
That's good to hear.
The court, the court, the court receiver is, has basically unilateral control over everything with the property right now, which is a good spot. I will say, though, he hasn't, he hasn't pushed back on anything real recently or whatever. So, but it's, it's moving along the way it, it, it should have. The court receiver is on top of it. Well, I've had, I actually had emails and texting conversation with him on the 4th of July. So he's engaged on a daily basis, and they're, the, the judge very much supported the process that we're going through, and he's not, he's, he's, he's all on board with it.
Thank you.
Whoever, however the TB station was contacted, it's appreciated. He did better than the lawyer. It's some, something really, we had a court hearing the next, that next day, and it really did change the process. And we're going to get this done.
Good. One other question. Is Wayne County actually working on the bridge, or did they just decide to reduce the eastbound lanes to one lane rather than two?
The bridge is a whole nother thing. Yeah, they, they reduced the weight load on the bridge, and, you know, that's, that's all fine, because there was a vehicle, not city-owned, that hit the underside of the bridge. So they were having some inspections and everything done. So that's the bad news. The good news is it's been moved up the priority list for Wayne County, and they, it may be overly optimistic, but they, they would like to be taking that bridge down and replacing it as, to begin it as soon as next year. But the other part of the bad news is it'll be a two-year process where, where we will be without that bridge, because there, there are, once you get the railroads involved, it's, it's, it's very, I mean, I, I don't mean to take Wayne County's side on that, but to do basic maintenance on the bridge, it took Wayne County weeks to get permission from the railroad to just do some basic maintenance on it. They have extraordinary power. You, we have no appeal, really, process, so it, it presents some challenges. But the plan right now is they're, they're in the design phase of replacing the West Road Bridge, and it will be a replacement. It will be different specifications, and it'll take probably two years of construction time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Councilman Peruggi?
Yeah, Dean, I have a quick question. Does the new contractor know of our request to save bricks for, for dispersment?
Yes.
Okay, I just know, I just knew the old one did, but I don't know if the new one did. Okay. Well, thank you.
That was easy.
See? Anyone else have anything? All right, seeing no further public comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported for adjournment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered, 7:28 PM.